Hi, we are live.
Good evening. Welcome to the Jersey City zoning board of adjustment regular meeting. It's May 13th. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, you are hereby notified of a virtual meeting of the Board of Adjustment. This meeting will be conducted by electronic means in accordance with the Senator Byron M. Bear Open Public Meetings Act of 2020, which explicitly permits a public body to conduct a meeting electronically during a state of emergency. Governor Murphy issued executive orders 103 and 107 declaring a public health emergency and state of emergency and directing residents to quarantine and practice social. So at any rate, we have a Zoom meeting tonight and a substantially pared down agenda, but let's all start with the pledge of allegiance.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic. One nation, under God. Liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have any sunshine announcements?
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this hearing was given to the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, and posted with the clerk on Monday, May 10th, and we have the notices to be marked.
That would be B1 for tonight. B1. Okay. Very good. Now we'll have the roll call.
Okay. Commissioner Patel.
Hi.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Green.
Here.
Commissioner Ruggio.
Here.
Commissioner McCormick.
Here.
And Acting Chair Donnelly.
Here.
We have six present.
Very good. And now we will proceed to square and staff. Hey, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Very good. All right. Any correspondence?
No correspondence, just like you mentioned, we have a couple of changes to the agenda, so I'll share my screen and go through that.
Very good. Thank you.
Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Yeah. All right. So in addition to the items that were listed under adjournments, items nine and 10 for 199 Summit, those items will be carried to the next hearing, May 27th, with preservation of notice. Same for item 11 for 163 to 165 Delaware, that is also carried to May 27th with preservation of notice. Next, item 12, 22 to 24 Bergen Ave, that is also being carried to May 27th with preservation of notice. We are proceeding with item 13, the amendment for 226 Bay Street. Item 14, 91 to 93 Patterson Street is carried to May 27th with preservation of notice. We are proceeding with item 15, address 234th Street. We are also proceeding with item 16, 114 Waverly Street. And last, item 17, 286 to 294 Arlington Ave will be carried to to May 27th, but they will be re-noticing. So carried to May 27th without preservation of notice. So I'll put this in the chat as well. The three items that we are hearing are 226 Bay Street, 234th Street, and 114 Waverly. So if you're here for those other items, they will be on the agenda for May 27th.
Okay. And to just confirm what we were discussing earlier, the the order of the cases for the last two cases, they'll be flip flopped, and we'll be hearing case on 114 Waverly Street. We'll be hearing that second. All right, but 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 all other cases basically carried to May 27th. With one of the cases also going to require some re-noticing, the Arlington Avenue case. Okay, very good. And so that that also I assumes covers all business and adjournments. Lindsay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Very good. Okay, so let's get started with case Z21-004, which is an administrative amendment. The applicant is 226 Bay Street LLC. The address is 226 Bay Street. It's in the R2 zone, and this is proposed amendments to a previously approved case, Z19-108, for a four-story multifamily building. Amendments include removal of the cellar level, relocation of meter rooms and utility spaces, and changes to the cornice. I believe they're being represented by Chuck Harrington.
Yes.
You may proceed. Thanks.
Thank you. For the record, Charles Harrington of Conne Foley, on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Pagliano, if you want to mark the notices or?
Yes, Chuck, we've looked at your notices, your affidavit and proof of service. You notice a publication. So Bridget will mark that as A1.
Okay, this will be A1 for this application.
And Mr. Harrington, you agree to have your witnesses sworn in remotely, correct?
That's correct. Okay, so yeah, this is pretty straightforward. This application was before this board about nine months ago in August of 2020. So we're back here with a few proposed changes, one of which is removing the cellar because of some structural concerns, and that kind of triggered relocation of utilities, taking them out of the cellar. So and then there's some minor facade changes that Jeff will walk you through. So I'm not going to belabor it more than that, and I'm going to hand it off to Mr. Lewis, who was the the architect of record, the prior application as well.
Okay, and and Mr. Lewis, you'll just confirm for the the record that you all of your professional licenses in New Jersey are still valid?
Yes, they're valid and in good standing. Yes, thank you.
Very good. And so, of course, we accept your your qualifications and Bridget will swear you in.
Thank you.
Hey, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you could state and spell your full name for the record?
It's Jeffrey Lewis, J E F F R E Y L E W I S.
Thank you.
Right, thank you. I'm gonna go. Oh, this is not letting me just screen share. It says host disabled participant screen sharing.
Yep, just one second. All right, it should work now. Sorry about that.
Beautiful. Thank you. All right. So here we are. I'm actually starting right on my A100 sheet, which is showing our first floor plan. On the bottom here, we have what was originally approved, and then on the top, we have what we're proposing tonight. As Chuck mentioned, we did remove the cellar from this building, and what that has required us to do is to relocate our meters, our sprinkler room, our trash, our recycling, and our bicycle storage. So what I want to do is just start at the front of the building and walk down, walk through and show you where we put everything, basically. So if you walk into the main building lobby, you'll see, first of all, just to the right, we added two closets for our electric and gas meters. Then if you continue down the hall to the left, we have a door that used to lead to the basement stairs, but cellar stairs, excuse me, but we're not going to the cellar anymore, so we're using this space for our sprinkler room. It's the same case as you keep going at the second stair, so we're using the space beneath that stair for bike storage, for two bicycles, and for some of our recycling. And then at the end of the hall, we created a small trash room. And to do this, we had to reduce the size of unit one, which is our ground floor unit. It was originally 1,165 square feet. Now it's 1,094 square feet, but it's still a two-bedroom, two-bath apartment with a den. No changes to the second or third floor, no changes to the roof. Here is the front and rear elevation. On the front elevation, we've made one change, and that's to the the top cornice. This cornice is the same height as the previous cornice, the same overall depth, same material, same color. It's just a revised design that the client had liked better. That's the only change to the front. On the rear, we've made one change as well. Originally, the ground floor was a gray stucco finish, and the upper three floors were a light beige stucco finish. And we're just proposing to change that stucco finish above the top on the top three floors and the top floor to um to a light beige vinyl siding instead. And then looking at the sides, it's the same thing, where again, this was all stucco originally. Now we're just proposing to leave the ground floor level at stucco and do light base siding above. That's on this side and also on the other side as well, so both sides. And then lastly, we did change our our window and our door schedule. Originally, we were going to do this main door. This is the front entry door of the building, it was going to be a wood door, and the rest of the doors were all vinyl. We've changed that. Now, we have one door that's different. It's it's the door that goes from the elevator lobby to the roof deck on the roof. And what we're doing, instead of vinyl there, we're going to do a dark gray aluminum storefront, glass opening with glazing. And then the rest of the doors and windows, so we have Marvin fiberglass windows, Marvin fiberglass double doors, and then with that front door, it's also a Marvin fiberglass exterior entry door, except this one has like a wood grain in it, so we'll still have the look of a wood window, I mean, a wood door, excuse me. And honestly, those are those are all the changes we made. Like like Chuck said, it's some very small changes. That's actually my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about any of these changes we made. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any questions from the board on this amendment?
I have just a quick one, Madam Chair. So where that cellar was gonna be, what will be down there? I mean, will it be just lowering the first floor down a little bit, or?
No change at all. The first floor will be right at grade, and we're just not doing a basement cellar at all. There's nothing underneath us.
There's nothing underneath you. All right, just there. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions from the board? Okay, how about any questions from the public?
So if anyone has any questions or comments, you could click raise hand toward the bottom of your screen, or if you're calling in, you would dial star nine to raise your hand.
Just on this application.
Yes, for 226 Bay Street. I don't see any hands raised.
Very good.
Motion closed.
No, will any comments from staff on this?
No comments. I think it's pretty straightforward, even with the removal of the cellar and relocation of the utilities and those other storage spaces, the ground floor unit, the the change to the square footage is pretty minimal, still over 1,000 square feet, so still, you know, meets similar intent to the original approval. So staff recommends approval with the condition that the conditions for the prior approval remain.
Very good.
Thank you.
Very good. Do we have a motion on the application?
Excuse me, can I just make a point of order? Don't we need to close public portion officially? Benny?
Sure.
I thought we did that, but if not.
No, because it just got skipped over. I made a motion, and they just went into staff.
Okay, so we close the motion.
All right, thank you. Yes, just for the record, thank you. All right, I'd like to make a motion for approval on Z21-004.
I second.
Hey, Commissioner Patel.
Hi.
Commissioner Brown.
Hi.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Ruggio.
Yes.
Commissioner McCormick.
Yes.
And Acting Chair Donnelly.
Yes.
All right, motion carries all in favor.
Thank you. Thank you. Take care.
Good luck. Very good. Now we'll move on to what had been listed as case 16, case Z21-18. The applicant is Stephanie DeManuel. The address is 114 Waverly Street. The applicant seeks a C variance. It's a second-story addition with a roof deck on an existing two-story, single-family home. And also seeks combined front and rear yard setback. Very good. Applicant is represented by Ms. Kumere.
Hi, how are you? My name is Heather Kumere. I'm representing applicant Stephanie DeManuel for the address 114 Waverly Street. It's a pre-existing undersized lot, single-family home with two stories in the front, one story in the back. The applicant is proposing to put a rear yard addition in the back where there is currently only one story, to make it two stories with a rooftop deck on top. To present our case, we we are going to have Jeff Lewis, the architect, testify as well as a planner, just in case, Sam Bellamy too, as well. So on that note, Zach, do you want to get more details?
Heather, on that note, why don't we say that you have your your notices, your affidavit, proof of service, notice of publication, and we've reviewed those, and Bridget will mark that as A1?
Okay, that's A1 for this application.
And again, Heather, since we're doing this remotely, you have agreed to have your witnesses sworn in remotely, correct?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. So.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Steph is already, Mr. Lewis is already been sworn in.
Yes, and and we continue to accept his expert credentials, and he remains under oath and can proceed.
Great.
Sounds good to me. Thank you very much. I'm gonna start my screen share again. And this is another very small, very simple one that I'm going to be very brief with. So when I'm on our actual last sheet of the drawings, it's showing our second floor plan. This is the only plan where any work is happening. This is where the good stuff happens. So looking at the existing building, the front section here is a one-story enclosed porch. Then we have the main two-story building, and then that one-story piece on the back. So right now, the existing second floor is mostly an open space with just a small bathroom, and they have a door that goes out to about 150 square foot roof deck, which is built on top of that one-story addition. And the elevations that are existing are shown here now. Now scrolling down, this is what we're proposing to do. Again, we're not doing anything to the interior of the second floor. We're not doing anything to the front of the building. The change that we're making is we're enclosing that that porch, I mean, that deck on the rear of the building and turning it into a bedroom. And then we're creating a new deck on a smaller section of the porch. It's about 70 square feet, and we're cutting it back because we have an existing skylight that we want to keep, so we're leaving that part of the roof. And so, again, a 70-square-foot deck, a small bedroom addition. And then if you look to the right, you can see the elevations that we're proposing. And what you'll what you'll see is we are, we have a small section here, the roof will continue continue down. We're going to propose new vinyl siding to match what's existing. All the windows and doors are going to be new Anderson composite windows and doors. They'll be white to match all the windows on the existing building. And then the posts and and rails are all going to be the bamboo posts that we have for the existing deck. They're actually in really good shape, and we're going to reuse them for for this balcony. And that's actually all we're doing. I'll, I guess, pass it on to Sam, and he can explain why we're here. And then if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
And Sam? Very good. And Mr. Bellamy, Bellamy, can you just give us a brief summary of your your qualifications and your current license status?
Sure.
Let me swear the witness in first.
Okay.
Where's your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you. State and spell your full name for the record.
It's Samuel, S A M U E L, Bellamy, B E L L A M Y.
Thank you.
And I have a master's of city in city and regional planning from Rutgers University. I also am a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey and have my American Institute of Certified Planner certificate. I've been testified and sworn before this board many times now.
Very good. I didn't quite recognize you over over Zoom, but we happily accept your qualifications and you can proceed with your testimony.
Thank you. So we are just asking for the one variance tonight for this project. It's the combined front and rear yard setback variance. We are proposing 28.82 feet, where a minimum combined total of 35 feet is required. The existing building footprint won't be increased at all. We are just adding that one second-story addition above the first story in the rear there. So we are maintain maintaining the existing front yard setback, which is compliant. It does match the predominant setback of the block. We actually do comply with the rear yard setback, which is a minimum 20 feet. So when you're adding the the front and rear together, that's where we need that the the variance. And as Ms. Kumere mentioned, we do have an undersized lot here, so that variance is related to the undersized nature of the lot. So we are maintaining the existing conforming building coverage, and we also are maintaining the existing side yard setbacks, which are conforming approximately four feet on the west and zero feet to match the zero-foot setback on the east side yard there. So we are adding additional living space, and we are pushing out the the roof deck to maintain that outdoor space, which on the undersized lot is a benefit. And we also are removing some pavers from the rear yard, reducing our impervious coverage. This was compliant, but we're reducing from approximately 76% to 68%. So with that, I do think this variance can be granted in that the benefits do outweigh the detriments. The purpose of the municipal and you saw also is advanced with this project. It's an appropriate-sized addition. We will be maintaining an appropriate scale of this building, consistent, and will promote the general welfare. That's consistent with purpose A. And we also are maintaining appropriate setbacks and building coverage, which will provide for and maintain appropriate light light air and open space, consistent with purpose C. In terms of the negative criteria, there will be no substantial impact to the general welfare. As mentioned, the building footprint is within what's contemplated in the R1 district. This is a permitted one one-family use, and we are increasing adding a bedroom, which is consistent with the housing in Jersey City. So with that, there also is no substantial detriment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance. We are consistent with the purpose of the R1 district, maintaining the streetscape. It's an appropriate infill to the rear of the building there, which won't have any impact on light air and open space. And likewise, we are also consistent with the purposes of master plan. I think that concludes my my direct testimony, but I would be happy to answer any questions the board might have.
Very good. Are there any questions from the board? Okay, and Commissioner Arroyo, it looks like your hand is raised on Zoom. Just double checking, you're you're good? Okay, okay. So do we have any questions or comments from the public on this application? If you do, Lindsay will give you instructions or Tanyal about how to do that.
So if anyone has any comments or questions for this address, 114 Waverly Street, you can click raise hand at the bottom of your screen, or if you're calling in, you would dial star nine.
And we conclude our presentation, by the way, so we can answer any questions. Again, this is such a small project, we don't even qualify for minor site plan approval. This is why we're at the zoning board, to ask for a C variance for relief from the minimum combined front and rear yard setback. So if anybody has any questions, we'd be glad to answer.
So I guess it's looking like there are no questions from from the public or comments?
I do not see any hands raised.
Motion to close the public portion, please.
Okay. Public portion is closed, and staff could proceed with their recommendation?
Okay, planning staff is satisfied with the testimony given by their professional planner regarding C variance. We're in agreement. We believe that this is not a significant detriment to the zone plan, or will it have a negative impact on the public's general health, welfare, or well-being? It certainly makes sense that in these days, you would want to have larger units and a rear balcony. I think a lot of people are modifying their homes to allow for, you know, more friendly work-from-home spaces and spaces that allow you to have access to sun and light. It's just the times we live in. And staff just asks that the applicant and their attorney agree to the conditions in the staff report dated May 13th, 2021. Are those conditions acceptable?
Yes, those conditions are acceptable.
All right, planning staff recommends approval, and that concludes the testimony from staff.
I'd like to make a motion on G21-018 for approval with staff conditions.
Second.
All right, I'm gonna work my way down through this roster here. So I've got Commissioner Brown first.
Yes.
All right, Commissioner Patel.
Yes.
Commissioner Arugio.
Yes.
All right, Commissioner Green.
Yes.
All right, Commissioner McCormick.
Yes, and Mr. Bellamy, remember, I remember your first meeting with us, so you're coming along a way.
Nice. And Acting Chair Donnelly.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I did say yes, correct?
You did.
Okay.
All right, motion carries all in favor with conditions.
Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Take care.
Thank you, everyone.
Take care. All right, moving right along, back to what's listed as 15 on the agenda, case Z20-046. The applicant is Grove Street Hub LLC. The address is 234th Street. Applicant seeks a minor site plan with a D variance. Proposed rehabilitation of an existing three-story mixed-use structure and change in use of the ground floor retail to a category-two restaurant with a sidewalk cafe. The upper two residential story uses will remain. D variance, use variance. Let's see, applicant is represented by Gerard Pizzillo.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. How are you tonight? My name is Gerard Pizzillo. I'm an attorney with Genova Burns here in Jersey City, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Grove Street Hub LLC. They're the owners of the property at 234th Street, Block 11. They're the owners of the property at two thirty-fourth street, block one one two oh five, lot twenty-five, located in the Haris- Harris Smith Cove Historic District. The application before you tonight is for, as you indicated, Madam Chair, a minor site plan with a D variance. It did require us to provide notice. Uh, so I would just ask uh, counsel to confirm that everything is in order on that end.
Yes, Mr. Pizzillo, we've looked at your notices, your affidavit, your proof of service, notice of publication, and Bridget will mark that as A one for this application.
Okay, that will be A one for this application.
Thank you.
And Pizzillo, you'll, you'll agree to have your witnesses sworn in remotely?
Yes, counsel, we agree.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. So, good evening, Commissioners. Uh, a- a- as, as I indicated, we're here tonight on beha- uh, seeking a minor site plan with a use variance for the property at two thirty-fourth street. Currently on site, there is an existing uh, three-story mixed-use building. Uh, ground floor, commercial, retail space, as well as two uh, or a duplex residential unit above. Um, the application is really fo- uh, focusing on the ground floor uh, and the, the storefront as well as the facade. Um, this is a historic uh, building, it's in the historic district, so we did have to appear before the Historic Preservation Commission. And we did present those architectural aspects to them. Specifically, the rehabilitation and repair of the uh, box bay front uh, as well as uh, changing and updating the residential and commercial entryways. Uh, some cornice repairs. And we are going to uh, proposing to, you know, strip the paint from the existing structure, re-point the brick and get this back to really more of what it historically looked like in the nineteen thirty-eight tax assessor's photo. Uh, so we did present that and did receive a uh, uh, certificate of appropriateness from the Historic Preservation on April twenty-sixth uh, and a favorable recommendation to this board. Uh, the, and so, and, and Deborah David is our architect of record and, and she will be walking you through the his, uh, the architectural aspects of the project. The only other remaining uh, portion of the project is, is really centered around this commercial space. Uh, and, and is a request for a use variance. Uh, in the uh, in the zone, in the ordinance, three forty-five fifty-eight, uh, retail services, sales, uh, and a few other conditional uses are permitted. A restaurant uh, is not permitted. Our ask to you tonight is for a cafe, restaurant category two, uh, for a sidewalk cafe. And as the uh, Land Development Ordinance defines a, a cafe, restaurant category two, that is essentially the least intensive restaurant uh, category that, you know, uh, is permitted, is allowed. Uh, the specifically, uh, there's no kitchen, you know, commercial kitchen uh, equipment, no ventilation. So it's really a, you know, panini press, microwave, you know, espresso uh, kind of use that we're proposing. The only thing I would add is, we're not finished if this board were to approve tonight. Uh, and what I mean by that is because we are requesting a sidewalk cafe, that triggers an additional license uh, for us to obtain through the city's Division of Commerce. Uh, so we would hopefully get this approval tonight and then start the application process and, and ultimately hopefully obtain a sidewalk cafe license. Uh, subject to, of course, two ninety-six, section two ninety-six of the Land Development Ordinance, which governs sidewalk cafes. Uh, I could go through that, I won't uh, at this point in my opening. I, I'm sure there may be some questions later on, so I will save that uh, for later. Uh, at this point, if there's no questions for me preliminarily, uh, I'll turn it over to Deborah and she'll walk you through the architectural highlights of the project.
Okay, would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thanks Deb, and if you could state and spell your full name for the record?
Uh, Deborah David, D.E.B.R.A. David, D.A.V.I.D. And I'm all up to date on my licenses and flu shots and COVID.
Excellent, excellent. So uh, the, the, the board accepts your qualifications, please proceed with your testimony.
Okay, can I share my screen? Let's see. There's the share, share screen. Okay, this property is what, it's been a, a tire of
Deborah, 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 sorry, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, I apologize. Just want to make sure, you're, you're presenting the presentation materials, right?
Correct.
Okay, so counsel, Commissioners, what this is, is a uh, basically collage of all of the plans that we've submitted. Uh, this actual presentation was not part of our application, so I, just so the record's clear and, and counsel, uh, I would ask if we can mark this as A two and, and just for the record, uh, and we'll go through that. Everything here is part of our submission, just not in this order and not in, so this is just a PowerPoint for your benefits.
Right, this is, this is a trimmed down version because I don't think you want to look at every, every, you know, bathroom drawing. Uh, and this streamlines it a little bit. This is um, the former Ralph's Tire Shop, which is at, at the corner of
So, so I'm sorry, are we marking this as, as evidence?
See, I'm just all ready to go, so.
Uh, we should mark it as A two.
Thank you, counsel.
Okay, so this will be A two for this application.
Sorry, Deborah, go ahead. I didn't mean to steal your thunder there.
No, no, it's okay, it's just that I, I'm, I'm excited about this project. Because um, there are so many things that are going to, you know, it's gonna really update this, this sad little corner right now. Um, this is the corner of Erie and Fourth Street. It's been Ralph's Tire Shop for the last four years. Uh, it's been painted and battered and it's, 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 it's ready for, for a new life. So what we plan to do is um, take the paint off of the whole outside. We're going to try to, we're, we're, our plan is to spiff up the whole outside, even though that we're not going to uh, work on the apartment at this point. So the, the cornice will be uh, painted and, and fixed up. The storefronts will be um, rehabilitated. These roll-down gates are going away. We're, we've got a nice little metal roof along this part here. Um, the only thing is on, and it'll be all new uh, glass and doors into the ground floor um, cafe space. The apartment windows won't be changed at this time, uh, but they'll be, they'll probably be painted to give them a little bit of a new face as well. Okay. Here's the, this is the um, residential entry to the um, to the apartment, which is on the second and third floors, just a, a little duplex apartment. And here's what it used to look like inside. With uh, you know, this, this building really did take a, a little bit of a beating uh, from the nineteen thirty-nine photo. Um, no, sorry, I've got the dog, it seems to think she wants something now. Um, the nineteen thirty-nine photo showed a um, barber shop back in this back corner. And this was a tailor shop at this point in nineteen seventy-four. It was a dry cleaners and on looking back over the years in the uh, the directories from Jersey City, um, I found one reference to seventy-one Erie, which is the corner, as being a bakery. Um, nineteen thirty-seven, it was a barber shop and tailor. Seventy-four, it was a tailor and cleaners. And then about seventy-eight, nineteen seventy-eight, it became the tire shop. So it's really had a lot of different uses. Uh, what you, what I'm showing here is the um, existing south elevation and the proposed new elevation. And one of the main things is taking off those roll-down gates and restoring, rehabilitating, just making the, giving the, the existing low cornice a new life. Uh, it'll, will have standing seam metal roof and um, and hopefully the, the um, brick come, the, the paint comes off the brick nicely. Along this, um, along the Erie Street side, we have a, a door that was bricked in and made smaller and just, you know, the mishmash of different things, um, that we're planning to bring everything up to match and and uh, rehabilitate that as well. And here's our, uh, from the nineteen thirty-seven plan, nineteen thirty-eight plan. Uh, this door off of Erie Street uh, was a double door, so we're, we're happy to put that back. And even though it looks, we're gonna have, it looks like it's two different stores, but we, it'll be all connected from the inside. Our plan is to provide a handicap bathroom and just minimal seating because we think this is gonna be more of a takeaway place. Yeah, but in this, in the summer, and you're in that neighborhood, so many people, you know, stop by with their, you know, they'd walk their kids down to the school and then they might meet a friend. And it, we wanted to provide them a place to, you know, hang out and have a, have a cup of coffee with their neighbors. Um, let's see. Um, this is a rendering of what um, we're planning uh, to do with the outside. We're going to have um, mahogany doors and then a uh, this, it's, it's a, of course, it goes right out of my head. It is rookwood shutter green on the, on the ba- all the painted
Something I can have?
Pardon? All right. It will have rookwood bottle green historic paint color on all of the painted wood surfaces. And here's the view from Forestry and this is the view from Erie Street.
Beautiful.
And that is, they, I mean, that's basically it in a nutshell.
Thank you, Deborah. I, I, I don't have any questions if the board has any questions for Ms. David.
Um, I, I think we will uh, hold, hold the questions until after we've heard from all your witnesses?
Sure, okay. Okay, and before I turn it over to, to Charles Height, who's our professional planner, who will be testifying as to the use variance, I did fail to note, and I wanted to just tell you guys, that we did meet with the Harris Smith Cove Neighborhood Association and presented this project to them. Uh, and we did work with planning to really tighten up this use uh, to make sure that the, the community's interest in terms of not having uh, an intense, you know, restaurant use there all hours of the night. Uh, and we believe that, that, that we will have, you know, we can prove that this is a, a, an updated and, and uh, better use to what it was now. So uh, that being said, I'll turn it over to Charles, who will uh, provide the, the planning testimony.
Hello?
Bridget, can you swear, man?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
That's where you got your Charles.
I was trying to find you in my box here. Okay, just raise Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And just state and spell your full name for the record?
Yes, Charles Height, Charles spelled C.H.A.R.L.E.S., Height spelled H.E.Y.D.T.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bridget.
And, and Mr. Height, can you just uh, reconfirm for the, the, the board that your uh, licenses are still up to date?
Yes, they, they are. I am a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners um, with the firm Dresner Robin. Um, and appeared before this board on
Many times, yes, no, and, and we certainly accept your qualifications, I just wanted that confirmation. All right.
It's a privilege of mine.
Okay, you can proceed.
Uh, thi- this project is really a gem, um, it was a pleasure to work on. Um, we are here on what I would say a, a technical use variance request. Um, I'll jump right into it. The um, we do need to meet the particular suitability. I probably could make a very good argument that the cafe is an inherently beneficial use here in this neighborhood. Um, but uh, in terms of, of the particular suitability test, um, the lot is relatively small, even for the historic district size, um, which is eighteen thousand square feet. So here we have a fifteen-foot wide lot by fifty feet deep. It's only seven hundred and fifty square feet. Um, it is obviously existing uh, in, in terms of the, the building on it. It has uh, existing conditions. Um, we are focused on the ground floor, uh, which is currently uh, used for a commercial use. Oddly enough, as we detailed in our statement of principal points, that tire shop is a permitted use in historic district. It falls under the uh, retail sales and services. Um, I'll, I'll facetiously say if, if, if it was reverse, if there was a cafe here and we were proposing a tire shop, it would be probably a, a head-scratcher and, and not, not the met kindly with the board in this neighborhood. Um, so be that as it may, um, we are replacing a commercial use. So it's, it's really a commercial use ground floor, replacing a commercial use uh, ground floor. Um, based on site visits and just knowing the area, it's a very walkable neighborhood. Uh, there are many other ground floor commercial uses, specifically even several cafes along Erie Street. Uh, we're just north of Grove Street Pass Station and obviously, um, the square near the pass station is, is a very lively area. It's the end of the Newark Avenue Pedestrian Plaza. So this is kind of an extension of that, um, and, and it kind of relates to that pedestrian vibe, um, which only adds to more particular suitability. I mentioned the, the size of the property. You, you, we probably should consider uh, that the scale of what's being proposed by, by way of this use is on a very small footprint. It's only occupying four hundred and fifty square feet of the existing structure. Um, but for a tire shop, I, I don't know of many other uses that really would find a nice home that would work well. Um, I'll also go further to state, given that it's a corner location, first and foremost, mixed-use buildings at the corner is always a very common planning um, best practice. But specifically here, we have two frontages and we're utilizing them for a cafe and, and outdoor seating for that cafe. So it really does harness that energy of a small footprint inside, but also the additional sidewalk area to house more outdoor seating. Um, so if I haven't painted the picture, if, if the plans haven't demonstrated, I know um, Ms. David mentioned in the summer times, um, uses like this really bring life to the neighborhood. And I, I think that's all part of a positive aspect here. Um, switching gears to the negative, um, or actually I should, I should reference the um, purposes of land use law in, in the particular suitability case. One, to guide appropriate development on, for the general welfare in the state, that's purpose A. This is certainly meeting that, that purpose. Um, we also are meeting purpose J, to provide an um, conservation for historic uh, buildings and, and districts. Obviously, the intent here is uh, to preserve and restore the ground floor facade um, and, and obviously the structure being in a historic district. So we certainly further that purpose as well. I was getting ahead and, and jumping into the negative criteria. Um, with respect to the detriment of the um, uh, public welfare, we, we did go through a series of conversations as to the intent of the cafe. And as Mr. Pizzillo described, the, the panini press, the, the light fare, the um, takeout uh, concept is really what's being installed here. Uh, there is no heavy kitchen, no heavy exhaust, uh, so we do have minimal impact. uh, so we do have minimal impact. Um, and, and in terms of intensity, um, we probably will have a lot of foot traffic. So that's really the intent here, which in my, my opinion is not, uh, a detriment to the public welfare. With respect to, and, and as we've mentioned, I think this was a point, um, we wanted to make, we, we are seeking the sidewalk cafe licenses. We're aware of that and, and that will be part of the application or, or the project at the next step. Um, with respect to the impairment of the, the zone plan or zoning ordinance, uh, again, it's a head scratcher as to how a tire shop is permitted, but a, a cafe is not. I think it's consistent with a lot of the other commercial uses, uh, found in the historic district. We are, um, making the restorations to respect the historic district. Uh, and, and, in summary, I, I do think, um, the application's compatible and doesn't present any impairment to the zone plan or the historic district, uh, zoning ordinance requirements. With that, this is a great project and, um, I'd be happy to answer any project, any, any questions.
I don't, I- You're on mute Kate.
Yeah. I, 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 I think we will, uh, or do you have any further witnesses?
So, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, that will conclude our presentation. I don't have any other witnesses.
Okay.
Undirect.
Very good. Um, what do you think folks? Should we see if there are public comments first before we ask our own questions? Yeah. So, um, let's, uh, open the, uh, public comment and see if there are any public comments or questions.
So if there are any questions or comments for two thirty-fourth street, you can click raise hand, or if you're calling in, uh, dial star nine. But I, I don't see any hands raised.
Motion to close the public?
Okay. So if there are no raised hands, yes, we'll close the, we'll, we will officially close the public comment. Any questions from the board members about this application?
I don't have a question. I have just a comment. I really miss that, that, that place with this tire shop. That's where-
I miss Ralph's too.
I said, I always used to go there whenever I had a flat tire or something would roll in my tires and they were excellent. So, and I miss them and the neighborhood, but I, you know, everything changes, but-
Yep.
He was ready to retire anyway.
Yep. Now, worked out, may work out well for everyone.
I know.
Now you can get something to eat.
Yep. Any other questions or comments from the board? Um, so we will hear from staff now?
Sure. All right, so, uh, project at two thirty-fourth street. It's on the corner of Erie and Fourth and the Harasmas Cove Historic District. It's an undersized lot and as you heard and you saw, it's currently developed as a three-story mixed-use building with ground floor retail and residential above. So no additional bulk. The building is proposed with this project, does include a change in use from retail to a category to restaurant or cafe use with a sidewalk cafe. No ventilation is proposed because it's not permitted with a cafe to, uh, use. Uh, I liked how Mr. Bazilo put it. It's a panini press espresso type use. Uh, I think we should add that to the definition. Um, so it does not include a commercial kitchen and it's mainly used for carryout service. And, uh, we think that the sidewalk cafe is an appropriate complementary use for, for that category of restaurant. So since the current use is retail and this is a corner lot, uh, staff does not feel that the change from retail to, we do feel that the, the change from retail to a cafe is minor and would not be a detriment to the neighborhood. Also, the applicant is proposing to rehabilitate the building in accordance with Secretary of Interior Standards, and this project has been approved by the Store Preservation Commission and received a positive recommendation from HBC staff and the commission. As for the sidewalk cafe, sidewalk cafes are conditionally permitted in other historic districts, however, not in the Harasmas Cove District. Um, but there are aspects of this property that do make it suitable for the cafe with the sidewalk cafe. Uh, like I mentioned, it's a corner lot, uh, which is, it makes it really appropriate for retail, uh, commercial use. Uh, currently contains a ground floor, commercial, retail use, and also the, the sidewalk along Erie Street where the sidewalk cafe is proposed. It's over fourteen feet wide. So still with the ca- sidewalk cafe, it still provides a minimum of six feet of sidewalk width for pedestrians where a minimum of four feet is required. So it's still plenty of space for pedestrians. Uh, staff recommends the condition that a sidewalk cafe license shall be obtained from the Division of Commerce, which have their own set of standards for hours of operation and, and all, and all those details. And the condition also includes that all standards from the sidewalk cafe's article of the city code shall be met. And so staff recommends approval with, with that condition, in addition to the standard conditions, since there are a number of utilities, like signage, that's along Erie Street. The street trees were not feasible here. Um, so, one of the conditions of approval is that the applicant shall pay a fee in lieu to the Division of Parks and Forestry and the receipt of that payment shall be submitted to city planning prior to the, to the issuance of, of permits. And that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I have one, Lindsay, real quick. Um, just as a point of clarification, they still will have to go through the city for ordinances for a city, uh, cafe and all. I mean, we're saying that it is a good idea. It would fit in nicely, but our decision tonight, whether we approve or deny, will be, they still will have to go back to the city for the, uh, cafe licensing and all, because it seemed like we drifted off into so much on the cafe part of it.
Hmm, yeah, so, um, I think it's just appropriate to have that condition, so that way when they are pulling permits or going for, um, like looking, getting the final sign off that plans were built as approved, um, just to ensure that they did receive that, um, permit from, from Commerce.
But they also can't, but they also can't get that license without this approval by this board.
Correct, yeah, it's, yeah, exactly.
Procedural order of things.
Yeah, so the use is the cafe, the sidewalk cafe is, is an accessory use.
That has to get approved through Commerce.
Right. And then, then the, uh, Mr. Bazilo agrees with all the conditions that we have presented to him, right?
Yes, thank you Commissioner. I, I did, we, I did review the, uh, staff memo with the conditions attached. Uh, no issues, no issue with the additional, uh, condition that Lindsay just suggested, uh, in terms of us obtaining a license per two ninety-six, uh, as well as the payment in lieu for the forestry standard.
Very good. Lindsay, I just had a, a quick question. Um, can you explain why street trees aren't appropriate there? Is it a utility thing or?
Yes, so-
There's a drawing that shows, um, all the calculations.
Okay. Okay.
I tried to get you a tree.
No, I'll, I'll, I'll take your word for it, Ms. David. Um, I just wanted, uh, you know, uh, staff to just kind of explain why. That's all.
I should note, because I think there is a, a, an existing tree. I, I guess it's maybe on the line, uh, on the fourth street side, but that's remaining.
That is remaining, okay.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, it's a big old tree.
Right. But it's just on the Erie Street, street side. There's no, it wouldn't be feasible. Okay.
Yeah, I'm just gonna, I'll just share my screen really quickly. So this is where the existing tree is on Fourth Street. I have drop curbs over here and there's a fire hydrant here, um, a light post and various signage in between. So you need to have, there's certain, I don't remember off the top of my head, but, yeah, it's the spacing issue, parking sign, so.
Okay.
Yep, the, the payment in lieu will be used to plant trees where, um, the sidewalk can accommodate it.
Okay.
Very good question.
I believe that whole area of Erie Street is tight with, uh, signs and stuff that they can't put any many trees, because I know that area is kind of a desolate area for trees and all.
Mm-hmm.
Any further questions from the board?
I'd like to make a motion on Z twenty dash zero four six for approval with the staff conditions.
Second.
All right, Commissioner Patel?
Hi.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Rujal?
Yes.
Commissioner McCormick?
Yes, I'd just like to make a little note that, um, statement that, um, it looks like that'll be a better, uh, than, um, you know, I feel bad for the people that relied on that tire shop, but, um, now you're not allowed to get any flat tires anymore. But, and I'm glad to see that the historical preservation and the, um, Harasmas, Harasmas Cove areas were both in total agreement with you guys, and, um, I proudly vote yes, and good luck with the, um, further ventures for the cafe.
Thank you.
And Acting Chair Donnelly?
Yeah, uh, Ralph's was one of my favorite little odd remnants of downtown. However, uh, I do, uh, I'm happy to, to vote for this and it's a beautiful project.
Yeah.
So, yes.
Okay, motion carries. All in favor with conditions.
Good luck.
Thank you, thank you Commissioner. Thank you all. Have a nice night.
You too.
Good evening.
Very good. All right, so now we can, uh, are we ready?
Break?
We're done.
No.
We just, we just have one resolution to memorialize and then that would end the meeting.
Right, so we're closing the, we're closing the public session on it. And, uh, yeah, and we'll move forward with the resolutions.
So the resolution we have is actually a, a corrective resolution. Uh, the case is Z twenty dash zero zero three. The applicant is John and Mary Ann LLC. The address is eighty Romaine Avenue. Uh, we heard that case on January fourteenth. And at that meeting was Chairman Jacobs, Commissioners Donnelly, McCormick, Shadid, Rothman, and Mitchell. We memorialized the resolution on this on March fourth. By the way, the, the application passed six in favor and none opposed. Uh, however, there was a, uh, an error in the resolution, uh, where it said that there, this project included three bedroom units and one parking space, and that was an error. So they have a new resolution that removes that. So all in favor of memorializing this corrective rev- resolution? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And that-
Oh, was that, why was that one name, Rothman?
Say that again, you know, Rothman. He's now in South Carolina.
He's doing, he's studying, he's studying his shadows.
Yeah. So that's all for the resolutions, and I guess that's all for business this evening.
Make a motion to close the meeting.
My second.
Thank you.
Yay.
All right.
Great.
Good, good, good job everybody.